Good evening, everybody. The time is 6:02 on Thursday, March 25th, 2021. Roll call.
Dr. Rogers?
Here.
Jason Daly?
Here.
Randy Hall?
Here.
Mike Parsons?
Mr. Parsons let us know he would be unable to attend tonight.
Samantha Lovelady?
Here.
Mayor Shaw?
Here. All in attendance. Please rise with pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report. Waste water treatment plant update. The ecology amended funding package is still a couple of weeks away. Mr. Waddlington from Civil West did send us some notes that I'd like to read to you as to the current status of where we are in the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. So, number one, the notice of intent to award is done and it was issued Friday, March 12th. The notice of award is pending city approval. The next will be to send out the agreements for execution by the contractor. And then there'll be the issue of notice to proceed. Once agreement is returned to the city, the mayor will sign it along with the notice of award and we will issue the contractor their copy of the executed agreement along with the notice to proceed. So, obviously, there's a resolution on the agenda tonight about that. Talk about a little bit more when we get there, but things are proceeding along nicely. Also, if you remember, we applied to be on the state capital infrastructure budget to get $1.8 million to help pay for our loan. And I'd like, no one here knows this except for me. Vader made the initial list for the House. So, and we actually have $1.85 million. So, we are on the list of infrastructure projects in the House. So, that still needs to go to the Senate. The Senate will make their tweaks to the House budget and if they approve it, we'll probably be in. So, we're well on our way to actually getting that and having no loan at all on our wastewater plant.
That would be amazing.
So, yeah, Kathy Reed sent that to me just yesterday. So, it's very exciting. I hope that comes through for all of us. Moving on, item number two, mayor report, shoreline master plan update. Planning committee held their open house and there will be a public hearing on May 20th for that. And then lastly, there's going to be another public hearing held by the city council on April 8th for ordinance 2021-02 that the council passed, the standards for manufactured homes. So, part of that interim zoning ordinance is to hold a public hearing where we hear input from the public. So, that's scheduled. Council reports. Any reports from the council?
I got three bids for the history books to be printed.
Okay.
We have one, only one, that came in at eleven something a book. The others were twenty and another one was really out there at $38 and something per book. So, anyway, I don't know which one you guys want to choose.
Would the lowest better?
I would. She seemed pretty good. The one that wanted almost $40 a book is the one that used to reprint them for us for eleven something. I can vouch for their quality, but I don't know about the other two, but she seemed pretty qualified. They're right there on the, I can't think of the name of it offhand, but she's on a North Market. South Market. I lied. Anyway, so, yeah, I think that'll be a good deal.
Great.
And I understand from Diane that we cannot sell the books. We have to ask for donations. So, I don't know how that is going to work out, but...
It could be a $20 donation.
VCL sold them for 25. So, it's up to you guys, whatever, if you don't want to sell them for that much or get a donation for that much. I don't know. Like I say, we sold them for 25 and if they're in a public place within two months, I have to have two more printings.
That's great, yeah. You think you'll be able to get those done by May Day?
I hope so.
Yeah, that'd be great. It's a great opportunity to get some of those out there and put people's hands. Okay?
My suggestion is that we take the funds and follow them into the park fund as a donation.
That's right, because the park board, we've got a line item in the budget for donations already, so it would just fit right in there. And any other reports? You have a comment?
I was just wondering why you can't sell them.
Government? Does that say, is that enough to say?
I can look up the addition.
Oh, I'm just curious. Because if they sold them before, or is it...
The VCL sold them.
Oh, VCL, okay.
Any other council reports? Okay, hearing none, agenda approval. I do have three additions to the agenda, all great things. Items four, five, and six. Item number four will be council to consider waiving the park use fee for the Lions Club Easter egg hunt. Number five will be council to consider the expense for May Day insurance cost, $459.45. And number six, council to consider street closure on May Day, A Street from 7th to 6th from 10 to 3 p.m. It's all late breaking, late breaking items, so all great stuff.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council meeting in minutes for 3/25/2021 with the addition of four, five, and six.
Did you mean agenda?
Oh, that's what I meant, yes. Is it minutes?
Yeah. We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the agenda with the addition of items four, five, and six. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Ms. Lovelady. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the city council meeting on March 11th, 2021.
We have a motion by Ms. Lovelady to approve the minutes for 3/11/2021. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Mr. Daly. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the vouchers for the end of March for $3,538.98, making the March total $66,067.09.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
A second.
Secuted by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We do not have any special reports tonight. City business. Council to consider resolution 10-2021 amending resolution 09-2021, the wastewater treatment plant construction contract. So, this is directly related to the fact that ecology is going to be a couple of weeks behind getting us that final amendment to our loan package. The original resolution 09-2021 in section four, the language said, and I'll read this to you, this was the original language, "Entry into the agreement between the contractor and the city is contingent upon the city and ecology having completed and executed the grant funding agreement to increase funding for the project." So, it goes on to explain that a little bit more. Obviously, we can't execute the contract until that's done. We would rather not wait for that. Ecology has guaranteed this funding to come through for us. Our attorney is confident that we could remove this contingency statement from the previous resolution that would allow us to execute that agreement sooner than later. And the whole idea is that we want to get this thing going before the dry season comes and goes. Any other questions on that?
So, are you saying you want us to approve this before we guarantee the money? Or is that...
We are guaranteed the money, we just don't have, we just don't have the document. Ecology is finalizing it and it's going to take a couple of weeks.
So...
The state's good for it.
Are you going to guarantee that we're not going to have to eat this? Okay.
We are confident. It's not a maybe. That ecology, that is the package that ecology is giving us, the one that you all saw at the last meeting. They're just putting that document together, it's taking them a couple of extra weeks.
Well, I'll make a resolution. I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number 10-2021.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve resolution 10-2021. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Ms. Lovelady. Any other discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor approving resolution 10-2021 amending resolution 09-2021, the wastewater treatment plant construction contract, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. All right, item number two, council to consider adding a street light on 10th between 1007 and 1021 directly across from 1028 10th Street. The initial cost to PUD is $100 and then it's equivalent to about 27 cents per day for the 100 watt light fixture and 37 cents a day for the 200 watt fixture. Most of the fixtures in town are 100 watts. Mr. Hall asked about this. Is there anything else you'd like to say about it?
No, I just, it's very dark, extremely dangerous. The resident Vicki has complained about flowers and everything. With that street light, I think that will help the juice and lighten up the whole street, make it much more safe for everybody, law enforcement and everybody.
Okay, so I have a question. These addresses are not on 10th Street.
No, they're on E Street.
Oh, that was my typo. I'm sorry. They're on E Street.
I'm trying to figure out, now wait a minute, we only go as far as the 900.
You're right. No.
It's E Street. It's right, the telephone pole right across from Vicki's house, category.
Yeah, so it's directly past the 10th Street intersection.
And there aren't more streetlights down there.
No, it's very dark at night. I come home from work, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, pitch black, can't see nothing. And there's a pole there, so it'd be easy for them to...
To just add the light.
What is the, what is the normal light? Is it the 100 watts or the 200 watts?
Most of the ones in the city are 100.
It's about two-thirds, yeah. So, is this what PUD charges us if they put in a new light pole, $100?
Yeah.
So, why don't we have these new lights and these LED lights?
Oh, to go through and retrofit all of our old ones?
Yeah.
I do have a comment. When I talk to PUD, they, this one is going to be an LED light and they are working on replacing, all the new ones are going to be LEDs and when they replace old poles, they're putting LEDs off them.
Yeah, they have a subcontractor going through testing all the poles. I just talked to him today.
I seen him today.
Going to test, make sure there's no dry rot and then fill the hole. So, that's the first step.
Well, now they're already replacing a lot of poles, so I think it's good.
So, are we deciding, is it the 200 watt or 100 watt?
I would recommend the 100 watt because it is in a neighborhood. You know, I think that's...
200, it must be too bright.
Right.
So, if they're replacing these light bulbs, are we going to have to pay for these, the upgrade?
Then they do the poles, you mean?
Well, I don't know about the poles, but, well, those belong to PUD.
Yeah, but I mean, when they replace the pole, they do the light themselves.
Yeah, are we going to have to pay for that? Do we...
They haven't contacted us about it. It was really doubted.
Well, I think we pay for taxes anyway, right?
I don't think we do. Yeah, because I've heard this before at council meetings, they said it costs too much money to change them over or something. This was a few years ago, but...
It costs PUD money because the usage will be less.
Oh, it's not going to cost PUD anything, I'm asking. We'll pay for that.
One way or another, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, I think that's a good deal.
So, yeah, so we're looking at about $3, so we're looking at about $3 a month to add this light.
A correction to East Street instead of 10th.
Right. It's also 10, down in, past 10.
Yeah, south of 1100 watt.
Will we look for a motion?
It's money, we should have a motion.
Well, I motion to consider adding a street light on E Street between 1007 and 1021 directly across from 1028 E Street. This will cost about a hundred bucks installation and about, we'll go with 100 watt at 27 cents a day.
We have a motion by Mr. Hall to approve adding a street light on E Street. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Mr. Daly. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, council to confirm adding high-speed internet to City Hall. The cost is about $500 annually. So, we already did it. And by adding the extra computers to City Hall, the, we had, the City Hall had the slowest internet available to us here prior to that. And it got to the point where emails weren't sending anymore, it was just too much, it was too much for the amount of activity going on. And so, this week, it was set up and installed and it's night and day. Everything is running great now.
Who does it?
CenturyLink came in and did it.
They had something less than your best offer, huh? That we had here?
They had, the lowest speed available was a 10 megabit download.
Wow.
And so, that's what City Hall had.
Must have installed some time ago.
Probably.
Yeah.
And so, they had a...
They don't put that in now.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know what they do now.
So, I'll make a motion that we do what we already did.
I know, they have a motion by, they have a motion by...
So, we need it.
They have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the expenditure for the increased internet speed here in City Hall.
He knows his word is confirm.
Oh, confirm.
Yeah, well, it was kind of an emergency, so it was done.
How can it be an emergency when it's been in this condition for a long time?
Well...
This could have come before the council had been approved like it should have been.
We could have, but we could have, but we would have lost an entire week at least of productivity in City Hall because of it.
Well, how long have they been losing productivity? This didn't happen overnight.
Right, when we added the third employee with the third computer, that's when we started having problems.
Well, I think that, you know, then at least council people should have been called and asked.
Fair enough. We have a motion, we have a motion by Mr. Daly. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Ms. Lovelady. Once again, I do apologize that it came to council after the fact, but we need to get it done right away. Any other discussion on this?
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
Did CenturyLink talk to you about the fiber optics that's coming into town?
CenturyLink did mention that it's coming eventually.
Yeah, we're waiting for it as well.
But I don't believe that's what they installed. They did install a 40-megabit download and a 3-megabit upload service here though.
I mean, but, you know, later on, after it gets into town, we might be able to switch to it because it's going to be a lot cheaper.
Okay.
Do me something.
Because our phone bill, our three phones and internet will go from like $600 down to $200 and something with the fiber. That's what they said. All the equipment sitting in my office waiting for them to, we have to get something about gone underneath the router traps to get to us.
All right, well, look forward to that.
It's something to think about later.
Took me a year and a half to get a piece of cable.
Well, this is going to go down for quite a while now.
Talk about Hellman's Land, I think this area is like for all that kind of stuff.
Any other discussion on this?
So, the city will now have, what, 25?
Forty.
It's 40 down and it's about three up.
Nice.
Yes.
I just want to clarify that the expenditure was within our budget, so we were doing this to council for information, so we were okay spending the funds.
That's good, that's a good deal.
Well, I don't have a problem with spending the funds, I have a problem with the procedure of getting the funds.
Yeah, I understand that.
Just for the record, I'm fine with it actually.
That's why we don't make it, we don't make it a habit, right?
Right.
All right, if there's no other discussion on this, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number four, let's do some fun stuff. Council to consider waiving the park use fee for Lions Club Easter egg hunt. Anita, would you like to talk about this? No?
We're going to do the topic.
Okay. Lions Club's going to have an Easter egg hunt on which day?
The 3rd.
The 3rd, it's 4/3, April 3rd?
Yes.
You may want to add the May Day fee as well. Didn't we add that to another item?
Did not add a May Day park fee to the agenda though during agenda approval. Might do that later. You have any questions about this? Anyone?
I'll make a motion that we waive the park fee for the Easter egg hunt for the Lions Club on 4/3/2020.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to waive the park use fee for the Lions Club Easter egg hunt on April 3rd. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Ms. Lovelady. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, council to consider the expense for the May Day insurance cost. It's $459.45. We do have $2,000 in the special event budget and so we could tap that for the May Day insurance cost. It's up to, it's obviously not a city event, but it does benefit the city in many ways.
I think especially this year, I don't know, the city really needs, I mean, everybody, every city needs something going on. They need...
Need someone happy.
Some kind of breakout, something, so...
Especially now with all this virus and everything.
Right.
The city's always taken care of, that's, that's, it's like minimal.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
Oh, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve waiving the, or paying for the insurance.
Paying for the insurance, okay. We have a motion by Ms. Lovelady to pay for the May Day insurance. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Mr. Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, council to consider street closure on May Day, A Street from 7th to 6th from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m.
Is that because of the tents and everything or...
Well, everyone hangs out on A Street, so, in front of the post office and all that.
I don't know that we, that anybody really knows what May Day is going to look like yet as far as, do you?
Of course I do.
I mean, I know you've got some ideas and stuff, but...
We're going to have a parade, we're going to have a cake walk, we're going to have little princesses.
You're going to have garbage cans around town?
Yes, we're going to have garbage cans around town. We're going to have court bodies, we're going to have vendors, we're doing it all together. The only thing we're not going to have is a beer garden this year, but hopefully soon.
We'll have Mr. Frey's over there, he'll be standing, post somewhere.
Yes, we have. The show's department has agreed to have two, two? Two or more.
Two or more, yeah.
Available.
And so, I have a question about how are you going to have, handle wearing masks and social distancing?
Well, it's going to be put out there. We're going to signs up, I mean, do the best we can, just like any other place we go.
Who's going to enforce it?
You can't enforce it.
So, you're going to have all these people crowded together and you're not going to enforce it and you're just going to put signs up?
We're going to make, we're going to make strong suggestions, gentlemen.
Oh, that doesn't...
Maybe we can appoint Zona Video.
I mean, there's, nobody can make anybody do anything.
Want to be the mask checker?
Part of it.
You want to be the mask checker?
No, I'm just saying, you know, I don't need the smart remarks. This isn't funny.
No. I think most people will comply.
I think most people, these things are comiable, yeah.
And I would also hope that if folks are sensitive to it, perhaps they won't attend.
But it is about...
It's our job, so maybe... Yeah, that's why I brought it up. There's ways that it could be... I'm not trying to be nasty, I'm not trying to put up a smart remark because of it.
All of the vendors are required to have sanitizer at their stations, all the vendor tables have to be six feet apart. We've already got it all, we're going by what the violas are, the COVID.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
I wasn't being smart to you, but, I love it. I wasn't being smart to you about it, I'm just trying to answer.
No, I just couldn't get a straight answer and you finally gave me one.
Well, I was trying to...
That's what I was looking for. What are you going to do? What are your standards?
Well, you were asking how we're going to enforce masks.
Yes, and, yeah, that's true.
See, anyway, we can enforce...
So, you're not going to do that, okay? Well, hopefully by then, most people will be vaccinated. I hope.
I hope so. I don't think I've been on the list yet for the vaccination.
I am, I'm on this because I have a mask.
Yes? Who puts a six out?
So, we are on city business, item number six.
I'll make a motion that we close A Street before May Day.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the street closure of A Street from 7th to 6th on May Day from 10 to 3. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Ms. Lovelady. Thank you. Discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The street will be closed. Public comment? Any members of the public sign up for public comment?
Do you have any comments?
No. One person. They want to talk. Elected official comments?
I have a couple of things. I was, I was questioned today if we're going to get the park open early because we have the camera system down there, if that's going to let us open it earlier.
Could, usually we keep it closed because...
Mandalism.
Well, it's also, it's really soft down there and then folks go down there with their vehicles and then they tear it all up when it's so soft. And so, that's generally why it's closed. It's not so much for any other reason, just that people go down there, get stuck and then they mud and stuff, some...
Everything can have to get a little drier before you go in.
And so, that usually is why we keep it closed.
Right, that's why I tell people.
But it's kind of weather dependent, you know, if we have a really dry April, then we can open it right away.
What are the possibilities of turning that big space into an off-leash dog park? To like an official off-leash dog park?
Sure, I think I've seen grant money out there for dog parks and things like that. People love those.
I've just seen them.
Grant money for dog parks? I've seen, I've seen...
Well, I know that we worry about liability and stuff like that, but I go to the one down in Castle Rock and it's way, it's like a construction site really, but they have a large list of things that you're liable for if your pet does this or that or this. And I think that would cover our, but people go down there all the time and... People go down there all the time and run their dogs, and you might as well just be okay, rather than that one gal down there walking her dog. You gotta get your dog by your face! You know, you might as well just make it okay, I mean, I haven't had that situation happen yet, but I mean, it's bound to happen.
So you're just, we just put a sign up and just to say that it's.
Cause on the rules, it says, dogs must be on leash.
I can picture the sign.
I'm gonna take a picture of the sign that we may be able to emulate, maybe if we want to, I'm just putting that out there.
So we have an area of the park that's designated leash and then an area of the park that's off-leash? Or just the whole park's off-leash?
I was thinking that's the whole park, yeah. Uh, my other thing is Castle Rock School Board is looking for a, uh, person in Vader to represent Vader, um, the income community. Um, I'm pretty busy, so, and, you know, I figured someone that has kids in the school system, maybe, anyway, if anybody wants to, uh, be the Vader liaisons on or whatever for the Castle Rock Park Board, I'm looking for.
Park Board?
I'm Castle Rock School.
School Board.
Yeah, I, I highly recommend someone volunteering for that, I think it would, the, you know, the school boards have a lot of, they have all the pull, and so, hearing the voice of Vader would be good. Voice, you invited that, the voice of Vader?
That's not good, I'm sorry.
Further elected official comments.
Well, I would like to make one comment.
Yes.
About the, this, uh, dog park down there, that is a public park, it's not a dog park, and I think all dogs, as long as public is involved down there, all dogs should be on a leash. At all times, and somebody needs to make a special place for a dog park, not with interacting with people and other people with their dogs on leashes. I just saw this thing on Facebook the other day about somebody's dog almost got attacked by another large dog, and I don't think that's a good idea in a public park, to have all dogs off-leash. I don't know of any city that does that.
What about the city having certain days?
Well, that's, that's difficult too. I, I went down to, um, what's the park down by the river in Longview, Calso?
Is that the Dewey?
No.
No.
By the, by the woodchick place, and they got big.
Oh, by sloths, right?
Yeah, big fenced areas, um, with double doors to get into, so you can, you know, get in there, yes, I just, it, like Joe was saying, there's funds for, for fencing and dog parks.
I don't, but do, do we wanna take away from that park for an off-leash dog park, seriously, in Vader? How many, how, how many people are down there with these dogs that you can't trust off-leash? Uh, I would never put my dogs in that position, especially when you've got other big dogs around, you don't know what they're gonna do. From minute to minute, or what would set one off to hurt another dog, and then somebody gets spit, believe me, I've been in a couple of dog fights, it's not fun. So, I, I would just hate to see that at a public park. I don't think, I don't think that's a good idea myself, but. Not when the public is there all the time, and I don't know why you would wanna take away from the park by fencing off an area for off-leash that would be big enough to let the dogs have a chance to run either.
And actually, if Castle Rock, just thinking on like what you're thinking size-wise, it wouldn't have to be big, I'm not saying on the floor or whatever, but it's like this, it's big with a room. Yeah, there's two separate sections, one for little dogs and one for big dogs, I've taken my dogs there. I don't know if I would take my dog to scare Vader, but I'd do take a dog to Castle Rock one.
Yeah, I, I don't.
I get what you're saying, cause I would hate to take my dog to a big park.
I'm just kinda pretty bad dogs anyway, getting in fights.
Yeah, of course.
With people around and little kids and, and, dogs can be the best thing in the world, and you, you never know when something will set one off that you would never agree, never be near.
Yeah.
I just don't know, I, I think it's a little dangerous when the public is there, so, and you can't close the public out.
Right.
It's like, sorry, dog, please.
Any other?
Anyway, that's just my opinion on it, and I do have a list here for public comment, so, I was at the, uh, planning committee meeting the other night and, uh, found out that they are no longer trying to adjust our prices for permits and things like that, it's like kinda hands in the earth thing and don't know what to do with it, so, go ahead.
I didn't wanna stop unless you were ready. So, yeah, their, their recommendation was, um, was to adopt the county's fee schedule, which is.
Not a good idea.
It's, it would need some tweaking, and so, um, one of the nice things, we've got the, um, Stephanie has more time on her hands now, kinda, and so she's, she's, over the time, she's, over this year, she's been collecting, um, the actual costs on our, on the different things that we've had to do as far as the, the fee schedule, and, um, and so, she's going through and putting together a list, so that we'll have an accurate, um, representation of what it actually costs to do things, and so, no, we have not given up on the fee schedule, it is still being actively worked on, just not by the planning committee.
Okay, yeah.
Does that answer your question?
For that one, yeah, it does, and then, um, we're not getting reports from the planning committee and the park board anymore, again, um, you know, that should be at least once a month.
Okay, I will remind the chairmans.
We all know what's going on, um. Oh, and doing our ordinances, I, I'm really beginning to have an issue with that because it seems like we bring up a suggestion to do something, just like design, design standards for mobile home parks, and all of a sudden it goes straight to the attorney and to the planner, and we don't have any input in this at all, nobody. The planning committee is not doing their job by doing some research into what we would like to have for design standards for some of these mobile homes that are coming here, excuse me, manufactured homes. So, and then when we get it back from her, we've got five minutes to look at and vote on it, and I'm having an issue with that, I think that the planning committee, if they don't wanna be engaged in any of this, which it doesn't seem like they don't, then, then it's up to the council to do this, and I think that we're all capable of doing a little bit of research and finding out what we can and can't do.
Well, with the manufactured homes, the planning committee did spend some time on it, and then it did, the final ordinance, well, the interim ordinance went to the planner and then the attorney to final, finalize it, and then it did come to council, and then you had opportunity to review it and vote on it, if you weren't ready, which we could have delayed the vote.
Yeah, we did it the day before, though.
A lot of times.
Okay, here's my opinion.
But, but if you're not comfortable voting on it, it, it's fine, we can delay it, it's, it's okay.
Well, I would like the chance to really do a little bit of research on it, um, because like you say, it goes to planning, and then it goes to the attorney and, and to this planner or whatever he does, but it comes to us last, it should come to us first after the planning committee and let us take a look at it, and decide if what, if we're comfortable with what's in it, and then send it to the attorney, and see if she has to tweak it some way legally, and come back to us and let us look at it again before it gets approved. Uh, I just don't see the council's getting any input, it's like, oh, yeah, there we go, to the attorney, the planner, comes back the day before a council meeting, and we're supposed to vote on, it's already made up. I would like a chance personally for me to go through it, and I think the council wanna know what we absolutely.
Wasn't it the manufacturing home ordinance that, that we redrew different things and we sent it back and made modifications? I mean, the council had input and, and made modifications, and it came back again, I mean, there was things in there about, I can't remember what it was, but there were things in there that we changed, I mean, so, so you did have in, input.
Not, not that much, and it comes back just like this last.
So you had as much as you wanted, I mean.
No, I didn't have as much as I wanted.
If you have more to give, please give it.
It showed up to me the night before a council meeting, and we were, had to vote on it, I didn't get a chance to look through any of that. Uh, it's just that, it seems like that we're going through whatever their attorney wants, and then we get an ordinance and we're supposed to, she shipped it down here, and we get it the day before in a, a council meeting and supposed to vote on it. I would prefer to have time.
You can vote on it if, if you choose, you don't have to, we, we can delay it.
Yeah, I don't have to vote on it, but then the rest of the council votes it in, so it's, it's, whatever. Anyway, so, um, and I'd like to know why, I don't know this for a fact at the moment, does, does anybody get a newsletter in their sewer bills from the city anymore?
I don't think we've sent one out recently.
So why isn't that happening? Because you could get so much information out to the public, like maybe putting in your ordinance or two about trash, or about keeping junk cars out of your yard, you know, once a month or something, whenever you send out the sewer bills, uh, maybe that would help some people notice that they should be doing something.
Okay.
Or the news that's coming up in the city, cause nobody seems to know what's going on, and it's like this city keeps everything close to the vest. Um, I think it should be wide open, and we should have something even on the website telling people what's going on, and most of the time our website's so outdated, um.
Well, I, I would disagree with that, I mean, I think.
Well, we still have the dollar for bucks or whatever that is still up there, and, uh, you know, once in a while you get, um, you see a date for the planning committee or, or the council meeting or something that's still up there from last month, but yet the next two deals, they're current, so, it just.
I think, I, I understand your frustration with folks seemingly not knowing what's going on, and I've kinda mulled over, you know, the, how, how can you get people informed, but.
You sent out that newsletter and you put it on the website.
There's, there's that, that's an option, but for, I mean, think about this meeting right now, someone could be sitting at home on their couch or laying in bed and, and, and listening to what's going on right now, I mean, it's, 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 it can't get more convenient than this, and they're not doing it, you know, I mean, at some point, it's up to them to be informed, right? I mean, that's part of your, 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 your civil responsibilities as a, as a citizen.
I absolutely agree with you there.
You can't, you can't, I mean, a newsletter would help, I suppose, but at some point, they have to want to be informed, and.
Yes, but we're dealing with the human race here, and.
I know.
You know, it's still our responsibility.
Can't fix everything, Donna.
That's part of it, yeah, so, but I'm just saying that it's, it's, I believe it's the city's responsibility to get the information out there, if they don't want it, then there's nothing they can say.
Well, we could definitely look into the newsletter, I mean, you have some ideas as far as what it could do, maybe we could have, you know, plan the next, you know, five or six newsletters, maybe look at the season, what's going on, um.
Yeah, let them know about the park.
So if you've got some ideas, you know, jot them down and so that we could, so that, you know, we can make that newsletter.
Well, I'm a try, I, I even hate to write postcards, trust me. But I'm just trying to, you know, we as a city, uh, officials and things aren't promoting this city to the community, and if you don't say nothing to them, you don't exist anymore.
I don't mind helping with doing a newsletter, cause I obviously write for them, so.
Okay, Diane, do you see anything, I mean, other than the, the printing cost, which is negligible, I suppose, on a, you know, on a.
It's easy to do, it's just that someone, get someone to do it.
Just someone has to do it.
They'll have like a template or something.
Just someone had to, just someone had to do it.
I used to write it, so I know.
Yeah.
You're doing a full process for the newsletter.
We've, you know, we've never, we've never had that, I mean.
It has to be reviewed by you.
We've, I mean.
I think Jill just said it before, right? Jill just.
I, I didn't have any input on it in the, back in the day when it was, the last time we sent one out.
Yeah.
And, and then, um, we would also solicit information from our local churches.
Yeah, right, well, basically what I do with the column, right, it's checking what.
Well, I, I'm not active for giving local churches, that's none of our business.
But the community newspaper.
No, this isn't, this is a city, this is their council meetings, we're not, I don't think we should be advertising churches or anything else, that's separation here. But it should know what the city is doing and what the plans are for the city, and maybe a little update about what the city council was about, and things that are coming out about that.
Yeah, perhaps, and perhaps we could take like the mayor's report that I put together, maybe, maybe you take that and elaborate on.
I don't see any reason why you can't.
Elaborate on things, could do that.
It talks about.
Yeah.
Lions Club, the church, there's nothing wrong with that at all, you know, I don't see.
You could have like a little word in the corner.
Community section, there's what's going on in the community, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, I think we could fill a page every other month, I think, I think it's probably possible.
You're a writer, you would be an excellent choice to, uh.
Yeah, with my help, yeah.
Well, great, it's yours.
No, 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 I didn't say that, I was helping.
Always looking for a volunteer.
I mean, it might, you know, each, each newsletter maybe put in, uh, a reminder.
Basically, like a more political version of my column is what we're saying.
Being.
Like, everything I can't put in my column, but.
Right, you might put a reminder about what the ordinance is on, uh, the, the garbage picker or, or the junk car, you know, but not all at once, we don't want to sound like a dictator.
Yeah.
Look, maybe, you know, one item, each newsletter, you know, community reminder, blah, blah, blah.
Like, I don't know if anyone's ever seen, like, sometimes in my columns, I'll be.
But we don't wanna be too overvaluing.
Throw away your trash, or be kind to neighbors because of this, this and this.
The more you know.
Right, because I don't, I don't wanna see what's in our, our community newspaper, I wanna see what's concerning our government here and what is going on.
Well, that's fine, but there's no reason why you can't have a community section.
Okay, that's a good suggestion, we'll see if we can.
I would, I would like to see this council reach out to the community, because they're not gonna reach out to us.
Okay.
That should be the responsibility of this old government, is to reach out to the community and make them feel like they're a part of the government, or at least they've been given the information, so they can't find us new, if they don't know.
Right.
Okay.
Am I the only one?
It might poke them, they might come here, you just never know.
Pardon?
It might poke them, they might come here.
Exactly, that's what I'm trying to say.
See that, say, what are they doing? I need to get down there.
Well, it would be good to get people engaged in the city a little bit, you won't get all of them, but.
Might get a couple.
Get, getting a few of them interested again, and if they, it might keep them to come down with ideas, and, I don't know, I just think it would be a good idea if we reached out to the community. They're not gonna reach out to this government, it's not gonna happen, so, yeah, I think that's a good thing, and then, I, one, no, I have one more after this one, but, um, I have no intention as a council member of paying for copies that I request here to do my job with, and I was told by Diane over there that I had no special privilege here to get anything, and if I wanted copies, I was going to pay for them. Well, I'm not gonna do that, most of the time, everything I get is done by email, so I print everything I need at my own expense, so, I didn't ask for that bill, I didn't ask to, for her to print them off. Uh, she could've emailed it to me, but I got an email with that statement in it, that it was gonna cost me five dollars and some odd cents. I don't feel like as a council member that I need to pay for any request for a copy.
Well, there are a couple, couple, couple issues with that, if, it's my understanding that it was a regular public records request, it wasn't on behalf of city council that, that you requested it, and, and the, the other issue is that you've.
And how did she come to that judgment? That's up to me to decide whether it's up to me as a council member to want that information, not her.
Well, was it a public rec, was it a public records request? It was, it was an official public records request?
Right, as an official of this community.
So you filled out the form, the public records request form?
No, I didn't fill out the form, I asked for the information.
Okay, but you did it through a public request.
As a councilperson, anything I ask for is as a councilperson, and I am not paying for it, or I wouldn't be asking for it.
The, the other issue, the other issue is you've, you've requested over a thousand pages this year alone.
I don't care what I have requested, I am a councilperson, and I have a right to request those documents if I want them. Oh, yes, I do.
You absolutely, yes, you, you do get to see those documents, but when you're asking for a thousand pages printed in a matter of three months, it, it starts, it starts getting.
I didn't ask for a thousand pages printed, do you wanna see my computer of everything I've downloaded for what they've sent me? They haven't printed me a thousand pages of anything.
Your requests have been a thousand pages, it hasn't, you're correct.
Fine, they're emailing it to me, and I printed it at my expense.
So.
And I have every right to request any document I want from this city.
You do, you do, but at some point, the city needs to say.
And I don't want an argument about it.
At some point, the city needs to say, look, this is getting extravagant, if you wanna see it, it's free, come take a look at it.
And they can email it to me for free, too.
Yes, it could be emailed, but I think there was an issue with her, with being able to email at this time, I'm not sure what the issue was. Diane, what was the issue this time?
There wasn't an issue, it wasn't specified that we did it as an email, we printed it, it's not a problem if she wants to have an email, the problem is the time that it takes to gather the documents together. It's not a problem if she wants to have it emailed. The problem is the time that it takes to gather the documents together, scan them into the computer, and then email them. So, it's still pages, whether you print it on the printer or scan it.
And that is your job, and that's what you're getting paid for.
There are some, I say this diplomatically, you're right. But at some point, it starts getting to the point where it is, yes, you are entitled to have them as a, for public records requests, but we are also able to recoup some of the costs for extravagant requests.
I don't do extravagant requests.
A thousand pages in three months.
I don't care. I don't care. That is not extravagant.
Yes, it is.
No, it isn't. And who, and who decides when it's extravagant?
I think, I think it's fairly, I think most reasonable folks would think a thousand pages in three months is extravagant.
No, most reasonable folks weren't. And I happen to be on the city council. And if I want those documents, I want them. And it doesn't cost anymore to email it to me. And when do these people decide that they can't do their job? That is part of their job.
How many hours do you think you've spent on the public records requests on those thousand pages?
Some of them I actually did track the time. I think I even told them, but one I knew took about three hours. Another one was two hours. One, we had a volunteer here, and it took her about five hours to do one.
So we're talking about days of employee time.
I don't believe any of that. And I don't care what you say. I have a right to those documents.
You do.
And I have a right to get them emailed, and that's what they get paid for. It's all in the days paid, one way or the other.
Do you have any other comments on this?
Nope. But when I request documents, I better get them. And they can be emailed.
Diane?
I totally agree with you, Dawn, about that. My issue is that the documents you're asking for have nothing to do with the current things that the council is dealing with.
That isn't up to you to decide. That's up to me to decide what kind of information I want and the purpose that I want it for. And I don't need the council's permission. I don't need the mayor's permission, and I certainly don't need yours. Well, it's up to you guys, because you guys pay us. What do you want to pay us for?
I mean, yeah, I know you talk about your hands full and doing all kinds of stuff. I didn't really, you're spending hours.
And this is part of her job of getting paid for.
And you're right. I mean, part of government is public records requests, right? I mean, there's an entire Public Records Act. I mean, we all take the training on this, right? We all, we all know this. But also, we can recoup reasonable, reasonable costs as well.
I'm not paying her wages for public records. And as a council member, I'm entitled to them. I'm not the public. I don't ask for them just to be asking for them. There is a reason. And that reason is up to me, not you and not her.
We'll see if we can come up with some kind of compromise. Do you have another elected official comment?
Oh, there was a gentleman, Mr. Goff, wanted to send an email to the council, and you sent it to me.
Yeah, I sent it to everyone.
How much time did that take you to put you out very much?
That was a public records request.
Oh, well, it was an email, so it must have taken time.
Sure, yeah. Mr. Goff did send an email to City Hall for all the council members, and it was forwarded to all the council members. It was just letting council know. He wishes that we would look into starting getting our water system back. So, that.
Well, getting the water system back is going to be quite a real, and I, I want to see some kind of a plan for when it's going to start planning.
Yeah, so to, just a, just a real brief, we do have a, it is a very lengthy document. It's more of a book, really, on how to do this, right? Ken Smith and the attorney Joe Rayburger, they put this thing together several years back. And is lying, is very thorough on exactly what we have to do, when we have to do it, and all of the procedures involved to get our water system back. It's, once we initiate, start initiating the process, it's going to take the better part of a year for us to fulfill all of this stuff. It's going to require an attorney that specializes in this, this kind of thing. It also is going to require, like, a utility action plan, kind of like a business, a business plan is going to have to be created for it. We're going to have to prove that we're able to manage it, which is part of how our, the sewer system that we're working on right now. We can, we can refer to that and say, look how well we've managed this. We're able to run this utility. So that, that's part of it. Obviously, all the audits we've passed. And so, I believe we have until the end of 2023 to start the process, to put in the request. So we have, so we have some years to left before we can do that. So right now, I can say that City Hall's pretty, pretty packed with the amount of stuff that it's, that it's doing right now. And then during the construction of the sewer plant, there's going to be even more work. I'm not sure if it was described during a council meeting, the prevailing wage requirements for the construction project. And then the amount of work that City Hall has to do to verify that all of the employees that are getting paid on the construction project are actually getting paid prevailing wages. We actually have to go down there, interview them. We have to get all the payroll from the construction companies, verify that ourselves, that they really are getting paid prevailing wages. So basically Diane's going to have to do payroll for another company, yes. And so there's a lot of work that's going to be involved just during this construction process alone. And so, obviously, if the council said, let's do the water system right now, we start that process. But my recommendation would be to wait a little while until we get at least through the construction process here so that there'd be some time in City Hall to handle that.
Okay, well, I'm just asking because I just got the information.
Yeah, no, I, I absolutely agree. It is something that this city must do. I mean, I could, I could give you a list of reasons why, you know, this long, why we need to do this. It, it, it's, if the city's going to stay a city, if we're going to run our utility, we need that, we need that water system back. This year is a bad year. So.
No, I know, but what I'm saying, I just got a copy of that from the water department today, from that section. And to come up with all the money that we're going to need just to start up, the equipment that we're going to need to maintain it, the people that are going to be qualified to run it, where are we going to get all this money from to start it, even to begin to start it?
Yeah, it's all part of that plan. It outlines all of that stuff. We have to know exactly how this is going to run so that when it transfers over to us from county, it's a seamless transfer. And so, it's a lot of work. You've got to have all that, all that planning done in advance. So that's part of that, better part of the year that I mentioned. It's part of all that planning. So.
So, you're going to start that in '22?
I would, I would like to see that be part of the budget process this year, so that-
But that's only going to give us a year. Well, it could give us a year and a half.
Couple, couple of years. At the end of 2023, you'd have to start the process. And so we'd have all, so we have all of-
Because I, I read it wrong, man. I-
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's the end of 2023. So I, I would like to see in the budget process this year, so in, in, you know, in October or so, when we start working on our budget, look into this, get a hold of the, the attorney, see if Joe Rayburger, who represented us the last time on this, is still interested. He was the expert that helped write the thing to begin with. Get some ideas how much it's going to cost. Work that into the budget for 2022, so that in 2022, we can get this thing going. So, that's what I'd like to see happen.
Funding is a big deal.
Yeah. I don't know how much it's going to cost, but-
You may have to give additional funding.
Definitely could be the big, it definitely would be the big project for 2022 for the city.
Obviously, we get.
Well, the funding is going to be horrendous. I, I know that we have a million dollars in infrastructure that we have to bring up to date on top of starting up the water system. So where's that money coming from? And that's, that's what I'm wondering about.
That's part of the plan, and it hasn't happened yet.
You can't depend on grants for all of that. So, anyway, that's my question. I just have one more thing to say about getting those requests. It seems like you've all taken quite a bit of time to figure out how much time you've spent giving me public records requests. So there's a reason for that. And the reason for that is to keep me from getting as much public records requests as I think I need. Because you've certainly taken the time to figure it out.
We have never refused any of your requests.
Well, it seems like you're trying to now.
We're just trying to recover costs.
Costs for something you're getting paid for anyway.
Well, if I'm-
That's what you get paid for.
If I'm doing that, then there's the other issue that the agenda date they're posted on time, or that this is not done, or you're paying me overtime because I'm having to get everything done that has to be done in addition to doing public records.
Well, I asked for that information usually before a council meeting. So, you know, and there's what, two other people in the office now working?
No.
And I imagine that third person, part of that, where she was supposed to do a records request?
We're teaching her how to do that.
Yeah. So I don't see where I'm an issue for anything.
Okay. I would just like to be on public records. That you are being very condescending to me, and I don't appreciate it, Donna. I do a good job for you guys.
And I don't appreciate you treating me the way you do. So I guess we're kind of at an impasse there.
Well, I, I-
I always treated you with respect, and I don't appreciate what you-
And I have you too, until I have a reason not to.
And I, I just want to say for the rest of the council's information that Diane has done an excellent job. And I, I think it's fairly obvious that, you know, over a thousand pages in a matter of just the first few months of the year is kind of an extravagant, extravagant request. That has been-
That is your opinion.
That, that has been fulfilled. And so, we haven't been keeping any information from anybody that would be against the law, and we're not going to do that.
And that's my point when I ask for public records. I'm not just somebody out in the public. I don't ask for them just to be doing something. I ask for them for a reason. And that is my business. And as a councilperson, I would think some of the other ones would be wanting public records to find out what's going on here. Otherwise, I'm in the dark about everything because I don't have the friends and family network that you guys do. And I will continue to ask for public records, and I'm not going to pay for them. And I have every right to have them, just so it's clear. And I'm not saying Diane doesn't do a good job, but I'm not going to stand and argue and fight and beg to get public records that I'm entitled to.
Okay. Any other elected official comments? Mr. Daley?
I forgot to mention, I, I talked to the park board chairman last week about the gravel at the McMurphy Park. And she wanted me to mention it to council because it's kind of been brought up a couple of different times and nothing's ever happened. Because we've got that new tool and to fix the gravel and stuff like that. But honestly, there needs to be some more gravel put down there around the top half.
Yeah, and we've got, we've got money in the park, in the park budget for that, you know, so we can, we can spread some more gravel down there. It's, it's on the list of things to do before the park opens up.
I just have a bunch of gravel delivered down to storage units. And so I got, I don't know if you guys got a gravel guy, but I gotta do that.
Who'd you go through?
I don't know, I don't know.
HK, HK Construction or HK, yeah, Holling.
HK Holling.
Probably used to work and deliver gravel, so you know it's going to discompere.
Two sixty-five below, two, two eighty.
But you spread it yourself, right?
No, they truck spread most of it. Oh, I, you know, but you can truck spread it really good. I mean, just to do roads like that.
Yeah, I understand.
Anyway.
HK.
I gotta start down.
Oh, yeah. Have you used, like, goodies? Who?
Goble.
Goble.
And they pretty much do the same. It's about the same price, too.
Okay, thank you. Further elected official comment? All right. Hear none. This meeting is adjourned at 7:05 PM. Good night.